I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mayor Maney?
Here.
Brennaman?
Here.
Keel?
Here.
Monahan?
Here.
O'Hara?
Here.
Randall?
Here.
And Joe?
Here.
Do we have any motions to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? We have motion to approve minutes from nine twenty-one.
I make a motion to approve minutes from nine twenty-one.
Second. Discussion? All in both? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? All right, do we have any public input on any knowledge of items? Then what we'll do is we'll go to special event applications, we got amendment to that.
Ricky Kuntzweiler, and I'm guessing that the amendment is for the fire pit. So, we checked with our insurance, and they put up as our insurance for our special events, and he said that that is covered under our special event.
Sounds good, amendment ten here. Any motions on that?
I make a motion to approve the amended application for downtown Hartford for their annual wine lock, including fire pit.
Second.
All right, discussion? All in both? Hahn?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yeah.
Randall?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
And Keel?
Yes.
Thank you very much, hope to see you all there.
Yes. All right. Got seven oh five here coming, we're just a minute early for that, so what we're gonna do is move down to second reading of ordinance seven seventeen, surcharge for sewer water events.
No changes from first reading?
Yeah.
Motion to approve seven seventeen, second reading.
Second. Second. Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
All right, any discussion?
And we didn't put dollar figure in there, because we're gonna...
No, because we figured if they increase their rates to us, we'll just pass along, and we won't have to go through, you know, organs changed every time.
Yep. Perfect.
Nothing else, we'll vote? Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
All right, now we'll move to our seven oh five hearing. Assessment, we got resolution twenty twenty dash fourteen A for the Knight Street project.
And so, you know, as part of our assessment policy, you know, when we did Knight Street, the adjoining property owners get assessed the cost of that project for their share of the road and then sidewalk put in, to a maximum of a hundred dollars per foot. We updated our policy a couple years ago, when we started off with Mickelson, that we, once we do the project, we give those people that are assessed a year to come in and pay the city with no interest on it, and then, you know, who pays gets that, you know, taken off, and then if there are anyone that hasn't paid that within that year timeframe, the balance gets sent to the county, and then they start collecting it with their tax roll on that ten percent interest over ten years. So, we've got everybody come in and pay, except for the two that are on the roll that are in front of you now, the, there's three parcels, but basically two property owners are there. They have not paid their whole, and the amount shown is what we will then send to the county for collection with the taxes.
Do we have any motions for resolution twenty twenty fourteen A?
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dash fourteen A.
Second.
All right, discussion? Randall?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
And Randall?
Yes.
Actually, move to first reading ordinance seven eighteen, fines and fees.
Motion to your pass is basically a copy of our current fines and fees, you know, it's what we charge if somebody gets a fine, or a fee that we would charge for an application or whatnot, or what we turn in from the pool. We reviewed that at our last meeting, talked about some suggestive changes with it. The what's in red is what we talked about changing and bringing it to, and so, this is the first reading of this ordinance, if we still want to go with it, we still have second reading, so if there's any amendments that we want to make to it, we still can, but like I said, the red is what we talked about at our last meeting, the changes of making it to it.
Can we discuss first pair, or what?
Do we have any motions to approve first?
I'll make a motion to approve, so we can go through discussion.
I agree. Okay, discussion?
After Teresa put her comparisons in here, I wonder, especially, I'm looking right now just at the two swimming ones, the top one, single and the family. I agree, we need to go up, the thirty to eighty, and sixty to one twenty-five, and eighty to the old Steve. That's gonna put us even more than Sioux Falls, I would like to, you know, I think we should probably try to be under that if we can.
I would agree.
I just want to throw out, I'm sure you guys have read my report, me and Amy Seabird kind of talked about a little bit, and do you guys want to entertain just doing a single pass for everybody, you know, kind of bringing that price down and eliminating the family pass? You have any appetite for that? I think she says Vermillion, or maybe thinking that does that, not Vermillion, is what she said.
Do we have a lot of people that utilize the family pass?
We have quite a few, as I put in my report. The family pass is kind of a tough thing to regulate, because everybody thinks they want to put everybody on their family pass, with their babysitters, grandma, grandpa, and so then, you know, when we get them, we kind of go through the list with them and ask, you know, who they are and how they're related. Some people kind of get touchy about that, you know, questioning. We do define what constitutes a family, you know, on the pass, you know, it's gotta be member of the household, you know, but like I say, we, Amy's good, because she knows a lot of the kids and the people, so, you know, she kind of knows which ones to question, and which ones to not, so, it's okay, but it's just, you know, maybe something we want to talk about?
Maybe.
Oh, yeah, I think that's a great compromise.
I mean, you kind of maybe, you know, don't do the eighty, lower the cost for a single pass, but then you make everybody get a single pass, that's why one person, one pass, they sign in, it's, there's no question.
Is that what Amy wants to do?
Yeah. She's kind of suggesting, what we were talking about, because I was, I kind of went through, you know, what we've talked about for changes, just to give her a heads up, and kind of get her input, and she, she said, do you think they'd consider just doing a single pass, you know, like I said, we, we want to go up that much on a single pass, and because obviously you don't want a family of five to pay, you know, five hundred dollars or whatnot, but we keep that reasonable, and make every person get a pass.
How many people constitute a family? Mother, father, kids?
Do you remember how that was read? Let me see if I can find it there, right here. Yeah, you know, we...
It's a whole mentality, father.
Yeah, I, yeah, no, it's not worded that way anymore, we had that discussion a couple years ago.
Rental.
You know, there's a lot of different families out there, so...
I don't even know my pronouns.
Would it be too cumbersome to do a flat pass, and then they pay so much additional per each additional person?
I think it's all on the same problem, who's really got a pass as part of the...
Right, I think, yeah, exactly, I think it's kind of...
If you have a pass, you have a pass, you got a pass for you, and that's it.
Yeah. But I'm just back to, you know, what Teresa says, we don't want it to cost five hundred bucks, but I don't know how many families, five or six are gonna come in. I think we're going to hear everybody will see Sioux Falls raise their rates too.
Well, they're pretty smart.
I would venture that, you think we'll want smarter?
And I think in cases, honestly, where you've got, let's say you've got something traditional going on, where two of the kids, you give them individual pass, and then, once in a while, mom or dad, or the older sibling wants to go, it's three bucks, you know, we pay three bucks.
And then that just says they can always buy a day pass, and, you know, like I said, the kids, you know, buy a pass for the kids, if they come every day during the summer, but like I said, on the weekends, if mom and dad want to go or whatnot, they buy a day pass, and then they don't have to get to the season.
If you, if you figure a family, let's just say a family pass covers four people, I mean, even at a hundred twenty-five bucks, you're just, you're just a bit over thirty bucks to take it anywhere.
Well, true.
So, I mean, we might be right in there, if we just do it with family.
Right. Right now, our, a family pass is this, a family pass includes two adults and all children under the age of eighteen that live in the same household, either year round or under the legal guardianship care for the summer months.
That's messy.
It is.
Yeah, I would be for leaving away with a family pass.
I think, you know, when she brought that up, it just, I'd just do a single pass for them.
And talking about the rate for the single pass, I, I remember at, like, Wildflower West, for instance, if you buy those early enough, I think your pants are selling five dollars a person, which is plenty, but then your season pass for Wildflower West compared to our pool, so I think we need to address that at eighty dollars, and it's there for the original as well.
I would agree, I, I mean, I think if we went fifty for a season pass?
Yeah.
Fifty, sixty?
I think that's too much. Because we, we should sell more individual passes if we deal with paying.
Yeah, you think it...
So, if we, if we raise the individual to forty, and sell more passes, we should still be money ahead.
And that's right in what Vermillion does.
I got a feeling that you, because the fam, the people that are buying the families are spending sixty bucks, and if those families have three or four kids, next year it's fifty bucks pop, I mean, that's, there's gonna be people screaming about that.
I'd like to... There's no problem with forty, you know, and I think you can look at it every year.
Well, definitely, I mean, this is something we can address before the pool season every year.
And we're saying individual adds forty, family goes away, everybody has to have, if they want to have a pass, they got to pay...
Yeah, if they want to have a season pass, not worry about paying the daily admission.
Or they may pay a pass price at four bucks, or one, two, or three, or...
Right.
So, on that same line, I mean, why do we, why distinguish between a five to seventeen-year-old and an eighteen and above?
Yeah, just go...
Why not just make it a three-dollar day pass?
Or four bucks?
Regardless of...
That simplifies it.
I agree. So, three bucks on a day pass, forty bucks on the individual season, and all again? I mean, we're guaranteed to lose money anyway, so...
Yeah, that's really the question, is how much do you want to subsidize it?
Yeah, yeah.
Essentially, that's what, that's what we're...
And we're looking to be able to pay our staff more, right?
Well, we're looking at an increase, because, yeah, we know we're gonna have to increase what we're paying staff next year, just because, to attract any, yeah. And, you know, we want to stay in line with other area goals as well, so, you know, we definitely, like I said, right now are on the low end, which you can tell, so, whatever we do would be...
So, does that work, forty, and go to forty, no family pass, everybody pays for forty, and then three bucks, did you say, Mark, for everybody, all kids?
Dogs.
Kids and adults. Kids and adults for a day pass, that's all three bucks.
Forty bucks for a season.
Would we still leave the five and under free, or just flat?
I think you could leave it at five hundred free, I guess. How about, it's too bad...
Moms coming in with a baby, and...
How many, I mean, five-year-olds gotta be accompanied by an adult anyway, or somebody?
Yes, right, yeah, yeah.
I'd be curious how many five-and-unders show up, well, the capable ones, sure is.
Oh, yeah, definitely, but like I said, they always have an adult, their parent with them that's paying an admission to the family.
Yeah, I think five-and-under free, we pay that as...
We don't charge for that, five-and-unders, we can do that.
So, what do we need to do, pass this and make the changes for second, or how do you do that? Amend the motion to...
Yeah, I would say, you know, you can approve first reading with these amendments, whatever changes we want to make, and if I don't have anything more...
So, if that's what we're gonna do, if we're gonna amend the motion on first reading, the only other thing I was curious about, so the six dollars per one thousand gallon mess, that's more than the city's paying, correct?
Yeah, because then we look at it, it wasn't a five, forty-five, something right in there, that that's what citizens are paying for thousand gallons.
Who made that motion? Did I make the motion?
Jones did.
You say?
Did he make a motion?
Jones.
I did.
Aren't made a motion.
So, I would like to amend my motion to change the single, or change the pass rate to four bucks for everybody, family passes go away, day pass for everyone five-and-over, three bucks.
Six and over. Five-hundred for it.
It says on here, five to... Yeah, it does.
Okay.
Yeah.
Five-year-olds gotta pay, four-years-old, everybody, everybody's gonna pay four-years-old.
Everybody's gonna pay, everybody's gonna pay.
You run your own.
I am.
Do you have a second?
I will, I will give the amended motion.
We vote on the amendment?
Yeah, we will, we amend it.
I'm not worried, because I think everybody knows what we're doing here.
Right?
And it's first motion. First reading, two votes.
So, we vote on the amendment first?
All right, so, I mean, Brennaman?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yep.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Emmerich?
Yes.
Can we vote on the original motion?
I don't think the advocate of the first one passes.
Yeah, you don't.
Are we good?
If the amended one passes, you don't...
You don't go back to the original one?
I don't know what's taking, Levana go, we're talking to Tony.
We should, we should have...
You guys have a big Tony here.
We should have not passed the first motion, then the motion according to what we want from the... Roberts will...
Yeah, 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 something you try to...
Karen, I'm sorry. Karen, hold on.
Right.
All right, well, that's where it can be managed. All right, with that, we'll move to reports. Hello, everybody?
Oh.
All right, so, you guys have, by September thirty-eight, review there, we had two hundred and thirty-five calls for service this last thirty days, which was an increase of eating calls from last month, which averaged about seven to eat, three calls per day. During that time, we had nineteen security checks, so checking the parks, storage units, and we had sixty-eight traffic stops, eleven citations were written, with thirty-two grim warnings and nineteen early warnings, seventeen civil processes were served, four DUI arrests were made, we had seven family disputes, which was an increase of four from last month. Suspicious activity, I'm just gonna kind of sum it up, we had four, which was an increase of, or excuse me, let me take that back, we had three suspicious vehicles, which was a decrease of four, and then one suspicious activity call, which was an increase of one. Larcenies went down, or were the same this last month, but kind of, as it gets cooler, those sorts of things kind of go down, but I probably just jinxed myself, so, we'll see. Case report, we have seventeen, which was an increase of ten, and during that time, eight arrests were made. Community events that we get coming up, we'll be doing lunch with the county October nineteenth at the senior center, and then November sixteenth, we'll be back at the stopping grounds for the county lookout. Any questions, comments, concerns? You got mine out of the way before.
It's interesting with the trailer setting right down from our place. If I happen to be in the yard, and people, and I make any eye contact with the people that are driving past, and they know I'm looking at the thing, you can't believe how many I'm throwing their brake lights when they go past my house, I should just stand out there. Yeah. The other day, I was happening to be in the yard, and I, this guy just came flying past, so I'm looking at him, and he seen me turn toward the deal, I didn't point. When he got past me, his brake lights were on, he dropped her below thirty, and then once he got past the thing, absolutely gunned her. Slowed him down for a few minutes.
Flaring those brakes a little back down, I guess.
Yeah. It was funny, it was just hilarious.
Thank you. All right, then we'll go to the chamber head committee fellow's report.
My information isn't active, however, I'd like to add one or two things. Karen doesn't really want to do that. I just want to encourage everyone to attend the community development open house on October twentieth at Western Falls School District, or the gymnasium there. We've put it on Facebook, we've created an event, ISG is sending us over some handouts and marketing material to also distribute through the community, and then I will also be participating in the SMGA mini-haha bus tour next Tuesday, and we'll give you an update on that when we have our next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Questions on any issue?
If you don't have the... The retreat?
Oh, we can do an update on that.
Mention of the retreat on there.
Sorry.
Development Foundation is disappointed.
I apologize. Would you like to bring up anything, or would you like me to? I really can't, because...
It's all confidential.
I know. We had a retreat last Wednesday, great things coming.
There you go. Secret meeting.
HJDM Retreat, Wednesday, September twenty-ninth was held.
There it is.
Yeah.
I just couldn't see it, I was in the, looking in the bones.
Triple asterisk.
Nothing to comment on that, so...
Did you put this together, or did your intern do it?
I did it, thanks, appreciate that.
Thanks, good work.
I am happy to say I am alive today, so that's a good thing.
Oh, yes, we do want to congratulate Ron that.
I mean, what?
I've had calls.
They're saying he far in the patch, or...
I had someone post on my Facebook last night how wonderful I was, and how they're gonna miss my personality and my smile, and blah, 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 yeah, so...
Close friend was it?
My husband's second cousin-ish.
Oh, wow.
I've met him maybe once my entire life.
Plaguingly well.
Hence why I do Amy M. Farr.
Yeah?
So, yeah. Well, there's two others, or three other ones out there, so, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Move to, good evening, your part.
Good evening, everyone, not too much in terms of updates tonight, see if the updates are at study, that's just kind of known on that. Water tower painting and the Western Avenue change, we're kind of on hold with those for now. Water tower, we're just waiting to see updates come in, and then the Western Avenue, as we find out more from Peter Green, we'll look forward to that. Updates, Western Meadows Phase Five, I haven't had last two-day, did the proof roll look great? They have crib in, and I think they plan to put the first little asphalt in this fall. Naps landing phase one and two, Turtle Creek and Western Meadows Phase Four, we just have a bunch of items remaining. We did send a data letter sent to Vance Peterson, haven't heard back on that yet. And then six in a month, I believe, Brian said he'd be able to get outs in the coming weeks to get that surveyed, so we can get designs started and get that ready for next year. We started feasibility study, a phase and location technology was chosen last night, and we're working towards getting that updated with Leslie for the facility plans in middle, end of the year, and then like Amy said, the community development plan, we have our open house for the public October twentieth at the...
Nice school.
Nice school. Any questions?
None for me?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Craig is out at Mississippi Conference, so, we've got his report.
Yeah, that was put separately, I think, at then, until today, because it's gone all last week, too. He wrote the...
Nothing, we'll move to Karen's report.
Yeah, I don't really have anything to add, too basic stuff.
All right, we're gonna keep pushing along, Teresa's report.
Just a couple updates, the dock park, unfortunately, I received a letter today, and we did not receive the DNP grant on that. Once again, a lot of applications, not enough money, and so we were denied that. Did talk to Amy a little bit about that, she's gonna push for some Invision funds, so, maybe we'll see if we come up with that. If you remember, the dock park, I mean, wasn't a huge project, I think the total's right around fifty-seven thousand to be able to put that in, and I, like we talked about, we'll consider it even without the grant, but, so, we can maybe have some more discussions on that if we want to, but just wanted to let you know, we did get that denial letter, NAPS, so... On the positive news, I sent an email to you guys, we got the grant for the FEMA storm shelter, that's a lot more expensive, so that's good, we got that one going there. And we not only got our seventy-five percent that we asked more FEMA, we got an extra ten percent from the state, so, whereas our costs, we thought was gonna be around two hundred thousand, actually, if, you know, bids come into estimates, it will only be like around a hundred thirty thousand, all depending on the bids, so, made a little money there, so, and we do have that all in our budget for next year, so, we'll look at it, and look at bidding next year, when it comes out. The other updates on projects at Stockwell Stone Handling, the only update is really on the Western Avenue, they did get plans designed to add that water into Twelve Street, Craig did review them yesterday, when he come back, and we talked over it a little bit. Everything looks pretty good on, on their plans. The only thing we wanted to make sure is, you know, now that we updated the technical standards, we want them to go back, because they did the sewer, you know, almost two years ago, we want to make sure, the, when we bid it out, that they're up to the new technical standards, so, Stockwell's gonna do that quick review, and then, they'll be ready for bidding, so, you know, maybe at our next meeting, we need to discuss, do we want to go out? You know, and it would be possible to bid as soon as November, or December, or, you know, I think we kind of talked about earlier with ISG, with Michael and David, that, you know, maybe a late fall, or this winter bid, maybe had advantages to us, so, you know, I can put that in for next week, and we'll try to talk about that a little bit more, because, yeah, and, you know, once I incorporate it into the plans and check that over, you know, we'll be ready to bid it if we want to, so, we'll kind of talk about that process. And then, as far as work in progress, I'm still waiting for quotes, insurance quotes, I haven't received, the four that I contacted are all gonna submit quotes, I haven't got any yet, I'm gonna follow up on that next week, see, a couple of them, and ask for some more information, I just want to see where they're at, and when we can expect to be able to compare them, so, I'll work on that. RFPs, they, for the liquor license, they're due October twelve. RFPs, they, for the liquor license, they're due October twelfth, I have not received any yet on that. I said I've gotten a few questions, but I have not received any, so I guess we'll see next Tuesday. If any come in or not, and then we can talk about it at our next meeting, how we wanna proceed with that as well. And then, as you know, we are out to bids for the egg lime and the fencing out at the sports complex, we already have one bid that has come in for the egg lime. And so those are all set to be open on October fifteenth, so we'll see, get some more. And then just, like I said, Craig left today to go to the municipal conference, I'll be leaving tomorrow, and I'll be gone tomorrow through Friday out there too, but we'll have myself on and we'll be checking emails if you're able to meet, so.
Double the fun.
Yeah, double the fun, you read the...
Maybe too late in this season, we didn't put any money in the budget for the dock park either, did we?
I did, in twenty twenty...
Is there some money in the budget?
Yeah, I did put them in, hoping we'd get the grant, so. It was a fifty-fifty grant, so we did, I did have some funds in there.
So we've got fifty percent in our budget?
We do have.
That's where the whole, cause the vision fit up with the other fifty percent?
Yep.
Sure. Probably won't get that done this year though.
I wouldn't think so, by the time you, you know, fence companies, I mean, it doesn't take a lot to put in, but, you know, fence companies, electrical, probably be a spring project.
Hit it on the agenda in March.
Yep, I can do that.
There we go, we have a target.
There you go, we have a target, there you go.
Alright, any other questions for Teresa? Alright, thank you. Move to, a chance to review or please the application for cannabis establishment application.
So with, you know, us passing our ordinances for cannabis establishments, I needed to draft an application for people to come in, you know. We have, you know, the free licenses available for dispensaries, and we did not limit anything as far as cultivation, testing, and manufacturing. Yankton had a pretty good application out there, I kinda stole their template, and, you know, you don't wanna reinvent the wheel, and kinda tweaked it, you know, as far as us. I went through it and kinda drafted, had Karen review it, kinda matched it against what our ordinance says as far as what information is required, incorporated that into the application. Kinda the main part is, is obviously you're gonna ask them, you know, the basic information, you know, rooms, this, where it's gonna be located. But I did ask for their business plan and a timeline, I think the last thing the city wants to see is an application come across for somebody who wants a license but has no plans of utilizing it, hence not generating any sales tax revenue, we don't want somebody to get a license and then just sit on it, so. I definitely think the council needs to see a business plan and a timeline or timeframe for getting up and going, so I've asked for that information in there, so. You know, once they submit an application with all that supporting documentation, it still needs to come to the city council, you guys need to approve every application, just like the liquor license, so. You would be able to review all the information on the application, and then you can determine whether you wanna issue a license or not, you know. Just, I guess, bring your reviews, any information we're missing that you would like to see, or...
Is it, see if some of the practice, I asked them if they'd been convicted of felony or pardon?
We have that in our ordinance, isn't it? And then the liquor licenses asset as well.
Do they?
Yep, there's a box they have to check, what they're gonna put in our ordinance, so that's one of the things.
So what's the thief, and if they lie, they lose their license?
I would say if they lie, you can pull their license, cause they're signing this saying what they represent on here is true and correct, yeah. And if it's not, yeah, then false application.
So I've had a couple people ask me multiple questions on this. It seems to be that the sticking point is gonna be they have to buy it from the South Dakota grower.
Oh yeah, yeah.
And if they can't kind of deal with the...
Can't get the product, yeah.
Or whatever they're calling their deal up there, they're really, they're out of, dead in the water until they get a grower going. I mean, I, I understand we need to do this, but to me, this is so far the cart ahead of the horse, it's not even funny. We should be advertising for somebody to come and set up a grow shop here.
I actually did get a phone call from a gentleman who's interested in our cultivation site.
Okay.
Asking the regulations of what zones they could be in, gave him some, leave us far as industrial property here, so. There's people looking, but, yeah. I, I agree, I mean, but we definitely wanna be prepared.
Oh, I'm not saying to go on, be prepared, I'm just saying, to me, this thing, maybe I'm looking at this wrong, it's so damn fluid right now. I would rather see us have this in a state that we can approve at a quick turnaround, rather than approve it and have to go back in two months or three months and change it, because something's, something's been changed.
But I think you need this to grow, you need to have...
You need, actually, this is for any kind of cannabis, so you need this if you're gonna, like, you're a manufacturer, cultivating, testing.
Yeah, to grow in Hartford, you need this to sell in Hartford, you need this to test in Hartford.
This is just an establishment, it's not just dispensary, you need it to test.
I get it, but again, this thing's still fluid as...
Oh, I agree there, that's gonna be the biggest problem for dispensary.
So what were the four categories, cultivating, selling, testing?
Testing and, and manufacturing.
And manufacturing. And the three licenses that we're gonna offer...
Are just dispensaries, the selling of it.
So what covers, what covers the cultivating, can you have as many grow sites as you wanted?
We didn't put a limit on any of that, cause we, you know, especially with our P and Z talks, they're gonna be self-limiting anyway, cause we're only allowing those in light industrial or heavy industrial sites. Those are limited within the city here.
But even if you're cultivating, you're still gonna be filled out an application?
Yep, you are, yep, this is, and you notice, gotta mark what zoning you're gonna be in, this is gonna be the same application for whatever kind of establishment you wanna do, I mean, it'll be the same application if recreational ever gets approved through the state, unless we need to tweak it from something the state says, you know, whatnot, change it, so.
All I'm saying is, if you do anything with cannabis in the city of Hartford, you're gonna need the application for it.
Yes, cause it all needs to be approved by the council here.
I had a question, I haven't had a chance to look at that, does that, is, do you have to fill out one application for each of those four, or can one person fill it out and check all four boxes?
I'm gonna tell them I'd want one for each different one, because you're gonna have to check what zoning and what type, yeah, so. If you're gonna do dispensary, you should fill out one, if you're gonna do a testing, you should fill out another one, and, yeah. They're all gonna be different licenses, yeah.
Separate licenses.
Yeah, they're gonna be separate licenses, yeah.
Any discussion of changes you'd like to see before we approve this?
That's good, amazing.
And obviously it says in there, you know, you got to abide by, you know, our ordinance, ordinance that we just passed, the seven fourteen, seven fifteen, so you got to provide our information.
Tom's signing off on this?
Yes.
How many can motion to approve the application form for the cannabis establishment?
So if I understand this correctly, you need a ten thousand dollar license from Hartford to cultivate?
Yes, yes, for every kind of establishment.
Dollar license to set. You need a ten thousand dollar license to test. So... That's what I'm saying, so if there's only three licenses, this town won't be full of grow houses, because there's only three licenses.
There's only three dispensary licenses. Other licenses are unlimited, we didn't put a limit on those.
The state limits us to three dispensaries, or the state...
Was one.
So, so, sort of the additional, so let's say, let's say I'm just gonna start cultivating. Cause I have a question. Is it still ten thousand bucks? So we're not limited to three ten thousand dollar licenses?
No, just three dispensaries.
Three dispensaries, and anybody that tests, anybody that cultivates, it's ten thousand bucks here and there.
Exactly.
Nice.
And that's, yeah, as well, so it's every year.
I could run you a business partner, yeah.
And it's in the yard, Mark, so you better get with our votes.
I know, I know something that is really good bonds, when they... Plan is coming together, aren't you?
I think Joan's a little uncomfortable.
I am.
Alright, we got a motion, we have the other discussion.
You said this came out of Yankton?
Definitely, yeah. Some things I, you know, took out and added for us, cause our ordinance is a little bit different, but, yeah.
So, oh, one last question, so does it say on here what they're applying for? For building, for growing, for cultivating, or growing, testing, no, it does not, right?
That's a good question.
So if, it says zoning, it says zoning, but it does not say...
You're right.
I'm applying to be a grower, I'm applying to be a test unit, I'm applying to be a manufacturer.
That's a very good point, I'll put that right under the application, that's new idea.
I am.
Good catch. You're sharp, Mark.
I am.
What type of establishment?
Could be a good business partner. Silent, very silent.
This is why we have all eyes on it, so that's good, yeah, all on that right at the top under applicant licenses, type of license.
Could it, could you also include, I'm just looking at that third page, I think, for the property? Right now it just says, property be used as a cannabis establishment. I don't know if that's a stick of that page or the property owner, if they should be signing off, but it's one of three boxes that are checked there, basically as dispensary, as growing facility, or as a testing facility.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, where are you at on that?
It's the last page, the option to use the property.
Oh, so this would be like if they were renting and a lease in a property, the owner would have to put that, so we can put that there as well, yeah.
If it was in both places, I had...
Yeah, no, that, that would make sense, I can put that up on the list to the type of establishment.
Something about select only one.
Right, sure.
And our ordinance does not, recall, you should have read this, it does not stop the same person from being a grower, tester, manufacturer, and a dispensary, correct? If they wanna, if they wanna dabble in all four pieces of the pie, they can.
Yep. Just need four applications from them.
They just need, so that's forty, that's forty.
Alright, right now we got a motion to approve it as this, other than that.
Right.
Go, run that, run through that again, or should we?
True, try that.
Let's, uh, let's kill it, yeah, let's kill it.
I think we kill it and have a reread.
See, come to next meeting, I can do that, and put it on the next agenda.
I'd say let's kill it and put it on the next agenda, is that fair with everybody?
Exactly, I don't think there's anything that's ready to go right tomorrow.
And if they don't have, they don't have any place to buy it, unless they gotta deal with the, oh yeah, believe me, I've had this conversation with about three people in my driveway.
Alright, we'll vote, Martin?
Yeah.
Alright, sure you want that?
His mind is on another drug, I'm just telling you. No.
Randall?
No.
O'Hare?
No.
Make some changes and put on the next agenda.
Gotta be cash, that's what Brandon just said, so. Hold on, that is a great question, can they bring in a ten thousand dollar check since this isn't supposed to be able to run through the banks?
What do you mean?
You guys, the federal, yeah, I...
The check be a personal check, it doesn't have to be...
It'd have to be a personal check, it couldn't be on a business account, is that correct?
They wouldn't have one, they can't...
It could be a business check, I guess if we're getting ten thousand dollars.
At that point, the money hasn't come from any sales in our office.
Right, I get that, but I'm just saying, then...
Yeah, cause they don't even have a license yet.
He thinks it'd be a seller's check.
Right.
Yeah, it could be a cashier's check, it could be a...
Cause theoretically, this is being driven so hard in the state level, cause they want the feds to approve a nationwide.
Alright, under new business, we got, review group, the county plot for track one of the reputation.
So this is a plot out in the county, it's just right north, it's McElane's Crown, right north of exit three ninety here, it's a farmstead that is sun is on right now. It is not in city limits, but it's in our plating jurisdiction, hence it's gotta come to the city for our approval first before it can take it to the county. He actually came to us with the plot in that same area last March, never did file it with the county, decided to kinda re-figure it a little bit, he's changed his side just slightly, and is now coming back with a new plot, basically the very same area, just a little different shape and size. We do have the pre-organization agreement from the community, passed it at last meeting, it's pretty cut and dry. ISG has reviewed it?
Think move to approve plan.
Any discussion? Alright, well, Randall?
Yes.
O'Hare?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yep.
Alright, we got for the job description for President Snow, and approve the advertisement.
The same as last year?
I say we did, you know, Karen updated it, just basically dates on it, but as far as, you know, same description and whatnot is the same as we've been advertising for.
Make a motion to approve the job description and the files. No concern that the pay scale needs to be adjusted?
I think, you know, what we paid out last year, I think we paid out fourteen dollars maybe, what, so. I think they'll be happy if we give them a couple, two or three dollars more, if we get the same applicant, I think going up to twenty will help, and depending on what applicants we get, if they're return ones or not, we'll devalue that.
Any other discussion? Ronald?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yeah.
Martin?
Yeah.
Randall?
Yes.
O'Hare?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Next, we got the TMA grant award for Swenson Park State Farm Credit.
So we got the grant, as I said earlier, for the storm shelter up there, this is actually our agreement with the state for that award. Tom has reviewed it, you know, it all looked fine to him. There's a couple things in here that we'll wanna make sure that we include when we bid, we'll, you know, work with our engineers to make, you know, they got some things about, you know, the state wants to do a review, wants to, you know, be able to accept or reject bids as well, but we'll make sure we have that in our bid documents when we actually do the project, but you know, says all looks fine, it's standard agreement.
Any discussion?
So this is the agreement, could accept their money when we go to bid, right?
Correct, yep.
So where, where are we at with refractors, remember, eating water and sewer up there, is that on the...
That, that's what we talked about, Stockwell's adding it to, that water to their project, and something we can talk about bidding out next month, you know, November, December, January, yeah.
Okay, and then we're tied.
Yeah, so we should, you know, both projects should be going on next spring, so they should be working in conjunction with each other, that we'll get the sewer up there to...
So then over the winter months, we'll be working on the design of the shelter?
Yep, yep, with the signed agreement.
Who's gonna be doing that?
I'm assuming you're gonna want ISG, unless she wants to go out for us.
Well, I mean, are we gonna be a committee working with this, or is this gonna be, are the, are people, I don't know... I don't know.
Um.
I get no clue what's going on.
To me, once again, that city on ground, it should be a city project, I think our city engineer should be in, involved in it, um, I don't think you'd wanna hand it off to a committee that doesn't, like I said, doesn't do this every day, doesn't know what's going on.
Well, I was gonna say, we should put this many urinals in, and this kinda cooking appliances, and this kinda structure.
And you know, when we submitted the grant, we had a design to offer, you know, it can be tweaked some, but you know, there is kind of a rendition out there already that, you know, thing to offer. Um, cause when we submitted for the grant, especially with this FEMA grant, they, they asked for a lot more information than, you know, some of the grants, so we had to make sure we had a building design, we had to make sure it was up to their, you know, since it's a storm shelter, there are certain codes, I mean, I think there was a book like fifty pages long and what needed, so, we've got a fairly good design to start with there, so. That can all be reviewed by.
And that, indeed, is it block, or?
I believe it.
Yes.
Yeah, well, it's concrete, for sure, I'm not sure if it's block or if it's poured.
Okay.
And wasn't that initial design a a poured concrete and a foam?
It could be, I, I know, it's, cause it's concrete because it has a storm shelter.
I'm assuming it's a storm shelter, that's the biggest piece of that grant that we're gonna have to make sure we maintain.
Yep, and that's just it, that, we have to make sure we make it up to that, those specs, so we'll have to follow that guideline.
I assume there's gotta be a sizing guideline too, correct?
Mm-hmm.
It's gotta serve so many people.
Mm-hmm, yeah, like I said, there was a spec book about fifty pages long, just to submit for the grant, but we had to make sure we covered those bases. And so we have all that information and plans, so, I would say we want ISG to review it, and, you know, if we want them, then to finalize the design and, and the documents, then, you know, we can do a contract with them, for that project.
On this, verify all the processes, maybe.
Yep.
Any other discussion?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Frandman?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
O'Hare?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
That's a good deal.
Alright, next we have review discuss the redistricting proposals for voting wards.
So, you know, with the new census information, we have a new population count, and we know what, um, is in our current voting wards, and so CCOG has put together a few maps with us to see, you know, how we maybe wanna redistrict our wards, I mean, ultimately, we wanna keep our voting population of wards pretty similar, I mean, you wanna have represent, about the same representation from each ward, you don't want one ward outweighing another ward, so, um, in, in your packet, um, the first rendition is how, it looks how we're existing right now, you know, where the cutoff are for Ward one, two, and three, you can see Ward one is the smallest voting population of, or, or people in the ward eight hundred and three, and Ward three's got, you know, one thousand three hundred and fifty-six, so, you know, definitely a change of, over the last ten years, Ward three has, has grown, grown way more than Ward one, so. With that in mind, the next three maps that you have in your packet are, um, just, you know, renditions for you guys to consider if you are doing changes, um, alternative, you know, one and two, basically, these lines are just kinda changed with keeping in mind, keeping the current seat holders, your, your current positions in this current same ward, so, you know, they wanted to make sure they didn't push, you know, one of you guys out of your wards, so, those one and two kind of, um, have that in mind, um, the difference between one and two, like I said, you know, is basically, um, let me see, Ward two was trying to put more pop, or, Ward two, alternative two was trying to put more population into Ward one, and less in Ward three, thinking that we would still grow more over the next ten years in Ward three, so those are kinda the difference between those two. Um, and Ward three did not take in, or, I keep saying Ward, alternative three did not keep, um, did not take in any consideration of where, you know, the current council members are at, and then just basically tried to even up all three of the wards, so, I don't know if you've studied them, or, or looked at them at least, and have any thoughts and feelings on them?
If they didn't, if they didn't take into account, you know, alternative three, where the council members live, how did they get closer in two than they did in three, cause three, I don't think three's that close for not taking in consideration where anybody lives, I mean, there's a sixty-some swing between one and two, and there's a sixty-some swing, there's a hundred and twenty swing between three and one.
Yeah, well, and I think, what I put in my report, report, I think alternative three, once again, they tried to put more people into Ward one, thinking Ward three's gonna grow more, just like they did in the last.
But they did that in two as well.
Yeah.
In alternative two, there's only fourteen, fourteen two difference.
I also think they tried to condense it to make the lines a little bit more even, if you look between two and three, two's got, you know, kind of a goofy jig off of the one block, and, you know, to accommodate one council person there, so it's a kinda funny line there, I think they tried to kinda even up the lines a little bit more, as much as possible. You know, trying to, so they're, so odd looking.
If we think alternative three, we're getting two council, I mean, mark the marker out.
Yep. I mean, and, and, you know, ultimately, we would have to adopt these by ordinance, and then when we did our last go around, we had verbiage in there as far as, you know, who stayed where, who was up for election, who wasn't, you know, that's all part of the ordinance verbiage part of this.
Your's gonna change on three, though?
Uh, yes, I'm on the north side of fifth.
I said, I said, I think both mark and marker out, I think the, the rest of you would stay, say more, but their, their lines change enough.
He's on the north side of that, and three, you looking at?
Three, I'm on the north side of fifth, that's four to one.
Yeah, so that, yeah, you're thrown into, you're both are thrown into Ward one.
Where's, what is your, where are you at of there? Seven? Huh?
Seven.
Seven. Well, I'd say Ward one needs help, we could probably have four councils in there. Kaboom.
And, you know, these are just their first three additions, if we've got other thoughts, if we wanna see another version, we certainly can.
When does this need to be done? Before the next election?
Before the next election, pretty much, yeah, 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 I mean, we have time, because we were drafting our ordinance that these wouldn't come effective till election time. Okay, you, you wanna get thrown out next month, you're stuck. Please tell them.
So legally, are we bound to change it?
I don't believe we're bound to change it, um.
We're determined to. I know it's.
But, it, it means, you know, with your elections, like I said, you wanna try to equalize, I mean, every town wants to have kinda equalized representation from all the wards, and, um, every city, pretty much every ten years, looks at this after the new census has come out, just cause as a city, you wanna do your due diligence and keep the voting wards as equal as possible, you know, throughout the next ten years. I mean, that's why, you know, you'd even consider, you know, looking at something like two or three, where Ward one, you've got a higher population than Ward three now, but in the next few years, that three will grow.
You gotta mention Ward three's.
Yep, you just wanna try to keep over the next ten years, somewhat, the equal representation.
Ward one's gonna grow too, though. Ward two's probably the only one involved, really.
You're right. Yeah, Western Meadows in there, yeah, they're doing a face five.
Yeah, Ward two is probably, or, alternative two, probably.
I would tend to think with you, alternative two, I, I don't like doing the big difference in three, because you're right, all three wards have developments going and have potential to grow, um. You know, just because Ward three took the biggest jump over this last ten years does not mean it's gonna do the same thing in the next ten years.
Yes, it does.
Well, it could, but I mean, you never know, our new development might pop up, you know, so. You know, if we do our due diligence now and try to equalize them at this point, okay?
I think alternative two, I think the numbers look more, I just think the numbers look better in Ward two, or, alternative two.
I would consider it, the only thing I don't love about alternative two is that, just that top peninsula piece on Ward three, I just assume we'd square that off at.
The thirteen and eighteen.
On the lower street. Jets on east.
Yeah, you would give that, uh, give it Ward two, or give it toward?
One.
One. But, uh, just to keep.
Yeah, I agree.
Don't know that that would make a huge material difference.
I can, I can, yeah, have CCOG look into that and see what.
Right.
Alternative three is the cleanest, if you look at the map, but it does the most.
Yeah, yeah, it's the cleanest lines or whatnot, but it's, it's got the most difference, you know, as of now.
Yeah, and that's. Go on, two, you're talking about the, this council, are you talking about the purple, or are you talking about the?
Yeah, he's talking about eighteen and thirteen, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and I think whichever way they would go, and I don't know, but Matt, you know, you could either put them in one or two, those two that are peninsula in there.
Are you talking about where it has an eighteen and a thirty eight on, you're talking about right above it?
Eighteen and thirteen.
Yep, eighteen and thirteen and, and.
The two that are Ward three right now on alternative two.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
Move them either to two or to one, whichever one works the best.
Okay.
I would say, looking at your raw numbers here, I'd probably say move Ward two.
But, Frandman gives up, makes a good point. Do you go with the cleanest lines based on future councils and everything like that, or do you pick the one, you know?
That works right now.
Yeah, this is a ten-year decision, I don't know, but.
Right.
Well.
I don't really know.
Do we have anybody that's prepared to adopt one tonight?
This is one of those scenarios where we could be accused of, nobody told me, you know, so this is our first look at it, um, I'd like to see this, you know, in a future council, I mean, if it's other council, and it can be an opportunity to, to at least discuss it.
Yeah, I agree. Well, but I think, sort of, alternative one just looks wanky, forget about the numbers, I mean, those lines just look wanky.
I thought you made a point.
Wanky. W A, W A, N K, W A.
Something like that.
Well, yeah, I agree, like I said, this is just for audio, first time for discussion, we can put these same maps in again, and then I can have them add another one to, to address your concern with that alternative two, that little peninsula one, see if we can do a little bit of change of that, to, like I said, throw it into one of the other wards, and see what that does with the number, and have that for you to review also.
So we don't mail newsletters to our constituents anymore, um, but could this hit the email? The, the emailed newsletter at least, to give those folks an opportunity to.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they're just going up, so do we wanna wait for this to, the first meeting in November, then, or, or do you guys?
Sure, cause that newsletter goes out.
Goes out at the beginning of the month, kinda the same time as the water.
Second meeting in November?
Second meeting in November.
Second meeting in November, yeah, we could do it, cause like, there's no. We just need to.
What do you wanna show them, Travis, all the, all our?
All, all.
All, just show them all.
Current, three.
Yep.
So we'll do the second meeting in November?
But are we alright with having to fix that little peninsula one on, on alternative two before we send that out?
Right.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Fix that.
Um, we'll do the three, we'll add a fourth alternative to make that change, um, we talked about with number two, so.
She says they're gonna work with the numbers too, right?
Right, they're gonna see how the numbers play out, yep, so we'll, we'll do these three, and then we'll add that fourth one with a change, so, and that can be reviewed, and yeah, we'll then, yeah, we'll put it out with our email newsletter, so hang out there.
Do you have an idea without doing a lot of research, what we, what was Ward, what were the, all three of the wards ten years ago? You know what I mean? I know what we grew in population, but how did the wards move in the last ten years? Can you make sense?
I have a two thousand ten, Ward one was eight forty-five, Ward two was eight fifty-seven, and Ward three was eight thirty-two.
That's pretty close.
Well, this, well, this is the newsletter, can you make sure our email, like our city council email, uh, is there as well?
Sure.
There's your information, I'll reach out to your city council and, and.
And your, and your city council emails are on the website too, I'm sure.
Well, we wanna make sure we bring, bring a big school.
Be easy, as powerful as possible.
Yeah.
Alright, sounds good.
Alright.
That's a nice growth, growth chart, I'll just tell you that.
Yeah, that is.
Hats off to the city and everything they've done, that's a pretty good growth.
Alright, next I'd love to discuss donating, donating to.
I'm making a motion to donate them to the change.
Second.
What's the second? Good job.
No, we're not gonna talk about this.
Amy, maybe, that was yours.
Not your vote. Randall?
Yes.
O'Hare?
Yeah.
Yes.
Frandman?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Yes.
That's the easiest gesture I've ever been given, you're right there.
But can we, can we, can we get those tomorrow, Amy?
Yeah, when do you want them, tomorrow, you gonna pick them up tonight?
Give me a little bit of time to clean out my story here.
I have Chris ready.
Yeah.
Before we, before, I just wanna give a quick update, uh, Perp Rec Board, we're looking at five volunteer members for that, holding, uh, I'm gonna be holding a meeting with them on the last Wednesday of this month, before, before making nominations, right? Basically, to take the five people that have, five of the people that have been recommended, one was Troy Harson, one's Kelly Puritan, one's Cali Tushen, Josh Holder, and Matt Evans. They've all, they've all shown interest and said, they'd like to learn more, um, if you've got others, that, basically what I've said is, I'm gonna pull that group together, we're gonna go through the, what that board structure looks like, kinda know what they're getting into, um, and have a chance to, to have a feel for who else is around the table before making nominations, so. If you got any others you'd like to add, have me sent to that group, there's, if we add more, somebody could get out, that's okay, well, maybe it's just, um, more like an information meeting before we kick off, so. These folks have agreed that they want to learn more about it, so I mean, I'll be in, I'll be in, I'll be over twenty-seven at seven thirty at the. With that, do we have anything to go into executive session?
I don't, just one first.
Thank you, motion, we go into executive session for personnel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye, aye. Go ahead, O'Hare.
My motion is here.
Second.